Now, 7:08, and the Board of Education is going to reconvene to open session. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Mr. Carubas?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Yeah.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
And Mark, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to our Board Salutes. Mr. Carubas, could you begin for us?
The Board Salutes Matea Valley Junior Trinity Powell, who is the Graphics Editor of The Stampede. Her work was recently nominated for Design of the Year by the National Scholastic Press Association for News Magazine's Page Design. She is one of ten finalists in the nation and the only finalist from Illinois. Congratulations, Trinity.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get it.
The Board Salutes Abby, I hope it's Abby Wid, and Emily DeAngelo from Matea Valley, who were selected to be the only pair from Illinois to attend the Youth Leadership Experience at the Special Olympics U.S. Games in Seattle, Washington this summer. Congratulations, Abby and Emily.
Good job.
And Mrs. Donahue?
The Board Salutes Nikua Valley Principal, Dr. Bob McBride, on receiving the Terrill H. Bell Award from the U.S. Department of Education. This award recognizes outstanding school leaders and the vital role they play in guiding students and schools to excellence. Principals chosen have a vision and a collaborative leadership style that produces outstanding results for all of their students regardless of race, language proficiency, or socioeconomic status. These principals have shown that with effective leadership, skilled teaching, and high expectations, all students can learn. Principals are nominated by their school communities during the final stages of the National Blue Ribbon Schools' Application Process. The U.S. Department of Education, together with the National Association of Elementary School Principals, and the Association of Middle Level Education, and National Association of Secondary School Principals, bestow the Bell Award on a handful of principals each year. Dr. McBride is one of eight principals chosen this year. Congratulations to Dr. McBride on this outstanding award.
We're now going to our Student Representative Report. Today, we have Ms. Alexa Jordan from Matea Valley High School. I think, there she is.
Well, good evening, everyone, and happy Halloween. My name is Alexa Jordan, and I'm the Class of 2018 Executive Board Representative for Matea Valley Student Government. We've had many new, exciting developments at Matea Valley this month. So first is homecoming. Homecoming was held on September 29th this year. Our theme was "Glow in the Dark," which inspired the name of various exciting Homecoming Week events. We held our Second Annual Color Scavenger Hunt, "Let's Glow Crazy," and neon themes for football game and Spirit Week. Our annual Powder Girls Flack Football Competition raised over $800 for the Pink Agenda and was a great success. Spirit Week ended with great excitement as Tyler Berlison was named Homecoming Queen, and we crowned the most beautiful Homecoming Queen to ever walk the grounds of Matea Valley High School. Alexa Jordan, no, I'm just kidding. It's a joke, it's a joke. An Halloween event on October 26th. Student Government is hosting a Halloween event for MB staff and their families. Executive Board will be helping with games and candy. And next, we have the Meet the Mayor's Night. With the oversight of two of our government teachers, Mrs. Fier and Mrs. Newkurch, who is here today, a select group of Matea Government students helped to plan a collaborative forum night hosted at Matea Valley to hear from Mayor of Naperville, Steve Tirico, and Mayor of Aurora, Richard Urban. Over 300 students from five different schools were in attendance. Great job to moderators Taylor Dancy and Mesa Lippi. Next, we have our District Principal Advisory Board. So Matea's Principal Advisory Board has initiated a district-wide meeting of Wabonzi Valley, Nikua Valley, and Matea Valley Principal Advisory Boards to discuss issues and propose ideas and changes that matter to us pertaining to District 204 as a whole. Matea will be taking 15 students on November 6th to the Cross Education Center. So, right in here, guys. All right, so also, a quick shout-out goes to DM and V for raising over $5,600 in last week's annual Penny Award. This year's theme was "Be the Change." Oh, yeah? All right, so the next is athletics. So, girls volleyball were the undefeated DVC Champions and are currently 8-0. Matea is hosting the regional this week. Next is girls tennis. We placed third at sectionals, and we have two state qualifiers, Mira Bade and Natalia Kokodon. Both are freshmen, so we have a lot of potential there. And for boys golf, Scott Bojien qualified for state and finished in the top 20 as a junior. The boys seem advanced out of the regional to compete in the sectional as a team. The Second Annual Kick-A-Thon fundraiser was extremely successful this year also. All three Valley dance teams joined forces to raise money for Ronald McDonald House by participating in a unified kick line. The dance teams kicked for one minute during the Nikua-Wabonzi Crosstown Rival Football Game and raised $5,143 for a great cause. This was 2,000 more than last year. So, great job to the dance team. And next, we have Special Olympics. Both Matea Valley Special Olympics soccer teams qualified for state, and Unified Soccer did really well at the tournament last Sunday. Both teams were competing at state, will be competing at state on Saturday, November 4th at Nikua. Mustangs Black went into overtime both games and took silver in the division, and Mustangs Gold went into overtime in their second game and took gold in their division. So, congrats to Unified Soccer and good luck at state. And finally, we have music. Over 900 student musicians participated in six successful fall concerts at Matea Valley, where they also hosted middle school music ensembles for special guest performances. Matea Music Students successfully auditioned for ILMEA, and many will be performing at the upcoming ILMEA District 9 Festival on November 4th. And finally, Matea Valley Theater will be presenting "Little Shop of Horrors" on November 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at 7:00 p.m., featuring over 60 students in the cast crew and band. So, I hope to see you there. And that's it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So, all our public comment today is for non-agenda items, and it's now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, the comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comments represent the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by the Administrator as appropriate. First, start out with Sally Glavine. Sally? Hi, Sally.
Hi. Hey. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Nikua has 3,649 students. Matea has 2,912. Wabonzi has 2,636. This makes Nikua just over 38% larger than Wabonzi. Why then does Nikua have 59% more English teachers, 63% more math teachers, and 56 more science teachers than Wabonzi? Since English is a four-year requirement, Nikua teachers are responsible for an average of 135 students, while Wabonzi teachers are responsible for an average of 155 students. That's a huge disparity. The numbers are not any better for math and science. I know these subjects are three-year requirement, but most students are rightfully encouraged and are taking four years of these classes. And this would mean that Nikua math teachers are responsible for an average of 118 students compared to a Wabonzi teacher average of 138, and Nikua science teacher student average is 130, while the Wabonzi teacher-student average is 146. Again, these are huge disparities between the schools. The numbers are a little better comparing Matea to Wabonzi, but there is still a disparity in English and science teachers at these two schools, and English and math stand out as areas of disparity comparing Matea and Nikua. With the focus on equity in the district, which we will even hear about in the presentation tonight, it is hard to see where the educational effectiveness and equality are here. Surely, such an inequitable distribution of resources, i.e. teachers, must be pointed to as a major, not the only, but major factor as to why achievement is higher at one school versus the others. Shouldn't all schools have a similar teacher-to-student ratio? In fact, if one school were to be provided additional staff and resources, shouldn't the school that is in the most need receive the additional staffing? At the very least, no school should have significantly less. And yes, these numbers are significant. Here are a couple of concrete examples. Nikua has 19 English 1 sections this semester. Zero have over 30 students per class. Wabonzi has 13 English 1 sections, and five are over 30 students. Nikua has 16 pre-calc classes. These range between 21 and 31 students. Wabonzi has nine pre-calc classes, ranging in sizes from 32 to 35. No equity here. Many parents and organizations have spoken publicly and privately about the need to raise test scores at our high schools. The achievement gap between student subgroups at Wabonzi has been specifically highlighted. Given this pressing continual need and actual, not perceived, reality, it is distressing that staffing is not equitable between schools. So, what is the answer? In the spirit of equity, clearly, Wabonzi and Matea are in need of additional staffing sources, because clearly, having more schools and lower class sizes leads to higher student achievement and is beneficial to students. More teachers are not a luxury. It is a necessity which can no longer be ignored. I want every, I know I heard the bell. I want every student in this, in every school to have the same benefit, and so should you. Then maybe instead of only one Blue Ribbon High School, this district could boast of three. And I know I ran out of time, but I found the same situation in elementary-middle schools, and I'll talk about that next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Thanks, Sally.
Next speaker is Michelle Nonnaman. Michelle?
Sure, thank you. Sit down. Hi again. My name's Michelle Nonnaman, and I'm representing Dyslexia Action Group of Naperville. In honor of Dyslexia Awareness Month, I'd like to share a paraphrase excerpt "A Day in the Life of a Teen with Dyslexia" from Understood.org. "Meet Henry, an 11th grader with dyslexia. He's a smart kid, but his reading issues affect nearly every aspect of his day. Here's a part of his typical day. 9:30, Henry isn't prepared for today's history lecture. He tried to finish his homework, but the reading takes so much time and effort that he only got through a few paragraphs. And because it took so long to read each sentence, he had trouble understanding how those sentences fit together. He's listening carefully to the teacher and struggling to make a few messy notes. The test on Thursday's going to be rough. Dyslexia-related issues: reading comprehension and handwriting. 10:45, Henry enjoys AP Math except for the word problems. They take forever to read. That makes it hard for him to remember the details and decide what to do with them. So, he gets the wrong answer even though he understands the concept. Dyslexia-related issues: decoding and working memory. Skip to 8:00 p.m., Henry's parents are nagging him to finish his essay. Proofreading is hard for him, so he needs his parents to look his essay over. They're trying, but don't always understand how hard he tries. Sometimes, they think he's being lazy. But homework just takes him a lot longer than other kids. Dyslexia-related issues: writing, spelling, proofreading. Parents and teachers often misunderstand kids with dyslexia. These kids may look like they aren't trying hard enough or aren't capable of doing more, but with the right teaching approaches, classroom accommodations, and other strategies and supports, kids with dyslexia can overcome their reading challenges and thrive in school and in life. I have two challenges for the Board tonight. One is a challenge for the Board to commit to having one teacher from every school in the district to attend another free program by day-end on 11/1. And I just handed out the brochure. It's also in E-News, I think, last week. High Park Day School will be presenting "What I Wish My Teacher Knew: Learn Practical Strategies for Helping Dyslexic Students Thrive in Traditional Classrooms." For the National Council on Teacher Quality, only 13% of teacher-training programs for early readers in Illinois are meeting standards. And 28% of Illinois elementary teacher-training programs meet standards on reading skills for students at risk of reading failure. My second challenge is to increase the momentum of training our teachers to be able to provide the educational environment our dyslexic kids need to become successful in the classroom and beyond. Teachers need more training on identifying issues with struggling readers to get the right help. It's time schools help our kids succeed with evidence-based, multi-sensory learning. It's time we close the gap with education. It's time we erase the stigmas with accommodations. And it's time we say dyslexia. For more information on dyslexia and our programs, please visit DagNaperville.com. We're also on Facebook and Twitter, and I have a personal Twitter account, Mom of Dyslexic. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker today is Nikki Guerrero.
I don't have a printer, so it's on my phone. Good evening to the Board. My name is Nikki Guerrero, and I'm a parent of students at Brookdale Elementary. While my own students have had exceptional teachers and are doing very well academically, I'm here to speak about a concern I have regarding the elementary curriculum for all students. I'm specifically concerned about the inherent inequity with the lack of a consistent curriculum across the district for elementary schools. I'm not only a parent with concerns, I speak as the veteran math educator. I have a master's in Education and Social Policy from Northwestern University, and I've been teaching for 13 years. I have been on two different school districts' math curriculum committees after the Common Core was adopted, and I've taught math in grades four through eight. Because of my own math education and teaching background, I will speak tonight mainly about math instruction. In District 204, it seems that there is consistency in the middle schools and high schools with regards to math instruction. This is to say that teachers and students in different schools will use common resources, and parents can determine through the, what the curriculum is through guides, specifically what is being taught throughout the year. However, this structure is not followed at all of the elementary schools. Some elementary schools, for example, I know May Watts, Spring Brook, and others, have decided to use a core curriculum, Eureka Math. They send out parent letters, use common resources, provide homework and homework helpers for each lesson. They follow the curriculum in a coherent order. In other words, the order in which the curriculum was designed by educators with degrees in curriculum and instruction. This consistency increases the likelihood that students in each grade level will cover the same content and experience the same level of instruction as peers in another class. On the other hand, in other District 204 elementary schools, teachers are sometimes using common resources, but many times, they are not. They may not pace their instruction in a way to guarantee they are exposing their students to all expected grade-level standards by the end of the year. What they use may be in a different progression than what the coherence of the curriculum dictates. One of the main reasons I decided to talk about this tonight is I've heard over and over again from many parents at different schools that don't have curricular consistency, that they are unsure about what is being taught, and there's a lack of communication about specifically what are students learning. They say their students use a hodgepodge of materials, and I quote "hodgepodge," and students and parents are confused about what the curriculum is. At these schools, students within the same grade level experience very different instruction. For example, you may have twins in the same grade level that have different teachers. They may bring home different materials from different standards with varied rigor, and they may not use many resources in common. I think this huge difference leads to inequity across the district. I know the Board has a priority to promote equity in District 204. One way to improve equity is through a common-based curriculum at all schools. This is not to say that teachers will teach the exact same way, but that students and teachers across the district will have common expectations. Frequent assessments of learning should be the same in order to assure this is happening. I would be very interested in discussing this further, if possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nikki.
We are now moving to the Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We will begin with the Superintendent Report. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, we have our first date for our Community Engagement Series, which we are calling Engage 204. November 14th is that date. We are currently trying to firm up a location that we feel will hold a lot of people. And we'll get this information out to everyone as soon as it is finalized. We think that that will be in the next day or so, correct? Yes. So, we're encouraging all parents, staff, and community members to mark the date down, and we hope that you plan to attend. Our Board really, truly wants to understand the community's values and priorities, and that is really the agenda for those meetings. So, we do have a lot of good news to share on this jury weather evening. First, once again, our very own Kathy Peel was elected Vice Chair of the Executive Committee of the Page Division of the Illinois Association of School Boards at our Fall Dinner Meeting on October 19th. So, congratulations, Kathy. And it was a great weekend for District 204 and Team IPEF. It was a very busy weekend with Team IPEF. We had a total of 822 runners compete between the kids marathon and the half marathon. Saturday was the kids marathon. We had over 487 students from District 204 running for Team IPEF. We had a number of school mascots who were there, and they were quite the hit with the students. And there was a mascot race before the kids marathon, which was quite entertaining. If you're there to see it, or if not, it's on Twitter. I know, I saw it on Twitter as well. On Sunday, the rain held off for a beautiful start to the Healthy Driven Naperville Half Marathon and our 335 runners for IPEF. These runners earned over $174,000 for the foundation, our schools, and our students, and it was, again, the largest campaign, fundraising campaign in IPEF history. So, there was a lot of bright yellow shirts out there on the course, being cheered on by many onlookers, and we had 15 school spirit squads that were there, and the enthusiasm was really amazing. So, I believe I've heard rumor that there are some special, there are supposed to be special prizes for the best spirit squad. I think they're having a very difficult time making that decision, and I understand they might be adding some prizes to it because so many of them were so good. So, our thanks to Susan Rasmus and the executive, Susan Rasmus is the Executive Director of IPEF and her Board for all of their work to make this past weekend's event such an excess. Over the four-year period, Team IPEF has raised just over $470,000 for our schools just with the race. So, it's pretty amazing. That's it.
Great. Thank you. We now move to Consent Agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through G.
I move that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items D through G as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie will call the roll.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye. And I now think we're moving pretty quickly to our discussion items. And our first discussion is on the Social, Emotional Learning and Mental Health Support Update.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Board of Ed, and thank you so much for having us tonight. I have with me Mike Triptow. He is our Coordinator for Related Services for Social Work. Candy Michelli, she's our Director of Professional Learning. And Dave Koopman, our Director, Coordinator, Related Services Coordinator for Psychologists. So, we've come here tonight to talk to you a little bit about mental health and how it's impacting our students and some statistics. If you don't mind, could you please hold, can you guys hear me okay?
We need more mic.
Yeah, more mics.
More mic.
Okay. All right.
Oh, better, better.
Sorry. I don't have to start over, do I?
No.
So, we've come here tonight to talk about a few things. If you don't mind, if you could hold your questions till the end, that would help us. Our purpose and objective for this evening, first, we want to talk about the statistics and mental health in the nation and how it's impacting our students. We want to talk about some of the things we've been doing in the past, as well as some of the current things we have going on. We want to talk about how the social-emotional competencies align with what we're doing, how the Illinois state standards align with what we're doing, and how we align our work with the Every Student Succeed Act, which you may have heard of as well. It's also called that. So, we would like to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been doing, as well as some of the things that we would like to do in the future.
Okay, this slide represents general data regarding children who suffer from mental illness. This was taken from NAMI, the website, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. In District 204, we see students that suffer from both internalizing and externalizing disorders. Just to educate the Board a little bit, internalizing disorders are typically seen as depression, anxiety, obsessive-compulsive disorder, inattentive, attention-deficit disorder. Where externalizing disorders are more hyperactive ADD, disruptive behavioral disorders, conduct disorders, and disorders that are often seen more with manic behavior and symptoms such as that. So, the one thing that we want to present tonight is the decrease in the stigma related to mental health. What we see is schools, is more and more people accessing not only the school for mental health support, but also the community. Parents are more apt to go seek an outside counselor or call the school to say, "I think my child is suffering from anxiety." What we're seeing in the schools ultimately also is that balance between their fragile mental health and also the academic demands that our community and what our school district puts on kids to make sure that they're academically successful. We address social, emotional, and learning standards within our classroom to target all kids from a tier-one perspective. And then, we also look at incorporating that into the curriculum, like with English classes. That's one of the areas that we can target, addressing all of the kids when they're reading a novel. We can bring mental health into that topic so the kids can learn from that. And then, they can also have the opportunity to access support when needed. The next slide. This is another slide, just to kind of lay the foundation of where we're at with understanding mental health in our community. As of right now, suicide is the third-leading cause of death in youth ages 10 to 24. If you are curious, number one and number two are car accidents and then homicides. Okay? Basically, where we see this as an epidemic is dealing within our community, looking at suicide and that prevention. Although we have students that are identified in our district as having emotional disabilities, oftentimes, the students that we're working with come into schools after an incident that occurs at night or something that's going on in their homes, and they access the school staff. And those are the kids that don't have, we'll say, constant emotional needs that we can address on a daily basis. These are the kids that come into school and access the supports that are in their buildings, either through the psychologist or the social worker. We're also seeing an increase in mental health diagnoses occurring at an earlier age. We are now starting to see more and more elementary school students being diagnosed with anxiety disorders. Again, in looking at that, we don't know necessarily what the reason for those anxiety disorders are, but we are seeing more and more parents accessing the school saying, "I'm seeing these observable behaviors at home. What can I do?" We also see those parents accessing community service agencies about that. So, not only are we looking at anxiety, depression, ADD, cognitive disorders, we're really looking at how those mental illnesses impact our schools on a day-to-day basis, because ultimately, it's impacting their academic progress. This slide kind of outlines some of the roles and responsibilities and some of the staff that are involved in looking at mental health within our district. You can see that of all the levels that are expressed there, social workers, psychologists, nurses, guidance counselors, it's really taking a look at all of these professionals that are available to address the mental health needs. The roles and responsibilities on the right-hand part of the slide indicate just different activities that each of these professionals can perform. The drawback that we have in addressing mental health needs is the difficulty with providing, we'll call it, long-term counseling, okay? Oftentimes, in our schools, we're doing crisis management, or we're doing quick assessments on students to kind of gauge where they're at with their mental health. Working with their parents, and if outside agencies are involved or therapists, we're communicating with them to find a balance between what's going on in the academic arena, but then also related to their mental health.
So, can you guys hear me okay? So, last time we presented to you is March 24th of 2014. And kind of going back and kind of looking at what we're doing now, we still follow the PBIS framework within our schools, and we follow that through the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 interventions. Those interventions are determined at each school level depending on the needs of those buildings. They do needs assessments in the individual buildings, and they determine what the needs of our students in those buildings are. Some examples of the curriculums that we're using in those buildings to address those different tiers are we use the CHAMP's curriculum. different tiers are, we use the CHAMP's Curriculum, Social Thinking Curriculum, Coping Cat, Botvin Life Skills, Strong Kids and Strong Teens Curriculum, Second Step, and PASS. We continue to follow the Bully Prevention Initiative. We have a 204 tip line. We have mandated training for all our staff for bullying. We do professional development for the psychs and social workers, and a lot of those psychs and social workers have brought that training back to the individual buildings and educated the teachers on that. And then we also have specific building curriculums to target those different areas. We've kind of moved to more of a different approach in dealing with students. Now we're trying to give them more resiliency and teaching them skills to be more resilient on their own in regards to things like, we're working on grit and growth mindset with students so they're more being able to cope and being able to deal with the general pressures of students and also general pressures that come from academics. So collect data on SEL interventions. We use progress monitoring, data collection through rapid assessment tools, we use rubrics, we use decision education, Ames Web, we do item analysis, and we also do the survey that we get through Power of Choice. And then through professional learning, we've done a lot of things as a district. And I'll go through these and I'll kind of tell you kind of how we use these. So we've done an overview in Aaron's Law, and what we've done with that is, the psychs and social workers have a specific training in Aaron's Law, then what we did is we brought those trainings back to individual elementary buildings, and we've given the teachers in those buildings a general overview and education of what Aaron's Law is, and we're implementing that curriculum into the classrooms at this time. A lot of opportunities have been given throughout the district for mental health first aid, and that's been offered through staff development. We have two psychs and social workers trained in the district that can provide that training for staff. We have crisis prevention intervention training, which is also through staff development. Majority of our administrators have been trained in that, all the psychs and social workers have been trained in that, and then staff also have an opportunity to go to staff development and be trained in that, too. Psychs and social workers have gone through a training in compassion fatigue, and what that really is focused on is really, how do we address the needs of our SEL kids the most effectively? Obviously, we know they, because the needs are growing, it can put a lot of stress on the people dealing with those students. So it gives us specific interventions on how to really address those needs more effectively. We've had trainings on cultural competence and executive functioning. We really focus on anxiety, and it's a growing anxiety and interventions within the school. So what are the specific interventions that we can use in the school that are going to address the needs of these students? We've done that through cognitive behavioral therapy and really mindfulness. So, you know, quick, specific evidence-based interventions, we can put in groups, individually with kids, in the classroom setting. We've had training on McKinney-Vento. We've done the training, which has given us more resources and a better understanding of the students that are homeless, and what resources they need, and how that impacts their educational and emotional development. We've had training in psychopharmacology, school refusal, understanding poverty. And then we've also spent a lot of time looking at specific interventions, such as social thinking, how do we develop more of those executive functioning skills for these students? And then most recently, we've had a training on just specific interventions to help students in recognizing more mental health, and how do we look for kids that are more at risk of, you know, suicide ideation.
In addition to that, we have several initiatives and activities going on throughout the district. We have a partnership with 360 Youth Services that's helping us with our Public Act nine oh four five six. Some people used to call it Senate Bill one hundred, same thing. We incorporate social emotional learning standards into our English Language Arts curriculum. We have worked with our local hospitals and created a process to help transition students back from partial and full-day hospitalization, so that when they get back to the high schools and middle schools and elementaries, in some cases, they are able to kind of hit the ground running without, have missed, you know, too much. And those supports are in place to help transition them in. We have a partnership with Mutual Ground that is in effect so that we can, they can help us meet our requirements for Aaron's Law. We have a lot of partnerships throughout the community. We have the Collaborative Youth Group, which several of us are members and participate in. We co-facilitate a breakfast, provide a breakfast every year with District 203. We have parent information nights. They cover things like power of choice, study skills, executive functioning, there's a variety of topics that are covered. We've increased the school-based mental health professional community with local agencies. And in addition to the U360 services that are at the high schools, this year we're piloting at three of our middle schools to focus on supporting with behavior. So as you can see, we have accomplished a lot over the last two years. We've shared with you many of our strengths and highlighted our work when it relates to social emotional learning. However, we do recognize that we have some areas of improvement. We have recently partnered with the Collaborative for Academic and Social Emotional Learning, also known as CASL, to help us identify our strengths and the area of work that we have to consider for the future. CASL's mission is to help make evidence-based social emotional learning an integral part of education from preschool to high school. Our partnership with CASL will help us develop a systemic and sequential implementation plan to best meet the needs of all our students. As we begin this process with CASL, we know that it's just the beginning, so that we're not standing still. But for continuous improvement, we also are looking at our requirements through ESSA, where they encourage us to establish learning environments and enhance students' effective learning skills that are essential for school readiness and academic success. One of the strong indicators is school culture. So at the beginning of the school year, we invited in two keynote speakers. The first one was with our instructional leadership team. We had Phil Boit, who came in to talk to us about school culture, and his main emphasis was on taking care of yourself, each other, and building relationships with students. Our second keynote speaker was Tom Murray on Institute Day, and although his topic was on building future-ready schools, his presentation was talking about using technology as a leverage to emphasize students' need to increase their awareness of the four Cs, which is critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity. All of those require social competencies of self-awareness, self-management, interpersonal skills, decision-making, and responsible behavior, which are all connected to the Illinois State Social Emotional Learning Standards. As a district, we're continuing to work on our five books, one district, keep us as a unified direction, and one of the main topics we're working on is growth mindset, as Mike pointed out earlier. Also, our psych and social work group has updated our risk assessment, and with that work, they have looked at just the procedure itself, along with mental health guidelines and the resources available. We'll be rolling that out with our psychs and social workers over the next month and updating our administrators as necessary as well. As far as requirements, as far as suicide prevention training, all our staff is required, and we use the Global Compliance Network to do that. And our individual schools are continuing to focus on building culture with their teams and their staff. As far as our ongoing activities, we have our District Equity Implementation Plan, and we are building off our partnership with the District Management Group to help us support struggling students. That also includes the mental health issues. One of the highlights that we want to bring to your attention today is the importance of community and our relationships with the agencies and local health facilities in our area. One of our committees that Dr. Sullivan and I are sitting on is the Mental Health Steering Committee, where the charge is to engage community and school to increase the awareness and importance of mental health for youth and our community members. And another example is the Community Alliance for Prevention, where Board Member Peel and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lee, along with other staff and parents, are working together to strengthen community to prevent and reduce youth substance abuse. Where our topic for community is that we recognize that schools cannot take on the burden of social emotional well-being ourselves, that we really need to make it a unified effort, not just for 204, but looking at our local area, the school districts like 203, to partner with us, to inform the community of all the work that we need to do in order to help our students be successful, not just in academics, but also being well-rounded, to be resilient, and have coping strategies, and positive relationships with each other and their family members. So part of what our work is moving forward is really building relationships. We feel that our teachers are focusing on relationships every single day in their classroom, and that by starting off having a good relationship with a teacher, students are more likely to share with them the struggles that they may be having, and going to them to let them know that they might need help. And then our teachers really need to know what to do when they get information, who to go to, and our families need to know who they can go to to get the support. So we're really looking at a community effort. Thank you. So do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, you mentioned at the end about the students being able to go to their teachers, and I sent some questions. And that's kind of where I was looking at, you know, when we're seeing increases in mental health issues, how well-prepared are, is this department being able to help train our teachers and give our teachers that information? And even, you know, the frontline people, the people in the staff, in the office, and resource officers and deans. How well are we getting some of this training, such as McKinney-Vento and mental health first aid, disseminated throughout the whole staff population?
Well, I can say there's been somewhat of a paradigm shift, at least for psychs and social workers throughout the district. Psychs and social workers traditionally, you would think, are mostly working, doing diagnostic work, assessing students, identifying students primarily for special education. That paradigm shift that I'm referring to is really us moving, even though that's our primary role and responsibility, we have actually moved more into working with the regular ed curriculum, and working with the teachers, and going into classrooms and doing presentations, working with the building administration when there is a need in those classrooms. Unfortunately, I think to target all the teachers, to get them trained, I think that's a work in progress, but if anything, it's our opportunity to at least know that psychologists, social workers, nurses, guidance counselors, the whole group of support staff are not just here for working with student services. Our job is to work with all the students. And when we go into those classrooms and make the presentations, hopefully the teachers know, or the students know that they can go to their teacher, and then that referral can then come to us for more of that professional support if needed.
Thank you.
Others?
What, just to, just to follow up on that, what percent, I mean, you don't have to be specific, just ballpark, of our staff have gone through either, you know, the mental health first aid, or the, what was the other one that Kathy had just mentioned? McKinney-Vento? I mean, it's not a required thing, right? It's a volunteer.
No, not at this time. I mean, right now, I believe all of our principals are trained in mental health first aid. So because at the elementary level, we only have part-time psychologists and social workers in the building, but at least the principals have been trained in mental health first aid. Even if a psychologist or social worker isn't at the building, if something arises, you know, a phone call is made to that person, and they come back and try to assess it with the building principal. But at least within the building, the administrator is trained in mental health first aid, and that's a general, I believe, eight-hour training that they go through.
It's a one-day, eight-hour training.
Because I went through the two-day, and I'm telling, and this was two years ago, the mental health first, you literally could go every single year, because there is so much to learn, and so many different ways of handling things, and so many ways that these things present themselves. And so that just has me concerned, you know?
But the complexity of mental health needs of the kids that are in our district continue to surprise even us. You know, again, we have people moving to our school district for what we have to offer, you know? But again, it's looking at, you know, the complexity of some of the mental health needs that we're addressing. And it's the training, we can, you know, we can train, and we can train, and we can train, but really it's that tier-one opportunity, providing those interventions, that we really need to strengthen.
I think the key, too, is, I mean, we're talking about trainings, and all of our buildings have some type of protocol in place, so that when there's a specific situation, they know the protocol to follow in regards to get to support, you know, personnel in the building. The other key, though, that Candy talked on, we're really pushing with our teachers, is the relationships. Because if you can develop a relationship with a teenager, and if you can develop a relationship with children, they're going to be more apt and more comfortable talking with you. And that's the key, is building those relationships, have those relationships with those kids, so they are more willing to approach you, more willing to open up and communicate about those things. Because the first thing is getting them to talk. Once we can get them to talk, we have the resources, and how do we access those resources? But it's developing those relationships so we can get them, in a sense, to come out of their shells and just open up and talk about what's going on with them.
The psychologists and social workers in all the buildings work closely with the administration and presented faculty meetings to, and again, it's to hopefully educate, but it's also to inform the teachers, because they're really the first line of defense. They're going to see the change in behavior in the classroom with the student, and then they can notify us. So those presentations and those in-services really help us get the message out.
I know right now, too, and within the community, what they're working on with Linden Oaks, a specific type of curriculum that they're going to put in place that parents, teachers, you know, support personnel can go, and it's going to be, it's not going to be a two-day mental health training, but it's going to be something to allow them to be more aware of what risk factors to look for within children and adolescents, so that at least they'll know specifically what they should be looking for, and when to access help, or when to worry about, or access or communicate with those kids that are starting to see some of those behaviors. That's more of a community goal that we have.
I think Susan, then, Lori.
I had two questions. One, you talked about Aaron's Law, you mentioned a couple times, so obviously extremely important. You talked about teachers not feeling comfortable to have that discussion in their classroom. So what are we doing in order to get that, those important aspects of Aaron's Law, have that discussion? What are we doing in order to ensure that that discussion does take place? And then you talked about emotional learning standards incorporated into the ELA curriculum. So if you could just give an example of that, please.
As you describe Aaron's Law, could you, so the public knows what that is, could you go over it?
Sure. Aaron's Law, and unfortunately, I don't know the full details of it, but it's basically educating school staff to identify the warning signs of when some form of inappropriate touch or relationship occurs with an elementary-age student.
So right now, at the elementary level, how it looks is, all the social workers have been trained, have gone through the training for Aaron's Law, and the teachers are involved, but what happens is the social workers are supporting those teachers by going into the classrooms with those teachers and co-facilitating the curriculum. So they're supporting those teachers in regards to making them feel more comfortable, so that when questions come up that they don't feel they can handle, because they know they have a mental health background, the social worker can support that and help those teachers answer those questions more difficult.
And before the staff from Mutual Ground goes into the classroom, they meet with the teachers, and they kind of brief on what to expect. And the teachers are actually present when the Mutual Ground staff are doing those presentations, so that they're, even though the teacher may not be the person giving that, the students see both adults in there, and they know that they can go to their teacher as well.
And to address your question of the ELA, an example would be when students are reading Catcher in the Rye. Because of, I believe the character's name is Holden? Okay, Holden. I believe he suffers from a mental illness. And that discussion that occurs within the curriculum, they're able to incorporate, you know, identifying depression, or at least some sort of mental illness discussion, and then that way, it kind of opens up the conversation, not only for understanding the fine points of the book, but then also incorporating mental health.
I have a question. This presentation pretty much focuses on, you know, what staff is doing and how you're supporting staff. And maybe this is a presentation for another time, but what about, you know, we have students that have reported other students. You know, what kind of support are we giving to those students who, you know, maybe, maybe they think that something is really going to happen with their friend or whatever, or maybe they're just, you know, I don't want to report it because I don't want to get involved. What kind of, are you having these talks with students as well, and what are you doing with that piece?
I mean, I can address that. I mean, in working with the students, I think everybody knows you're going to work with ABC Plan for the Day, you know, and then it just kind of moves into what happens at the night. When working with the students, basically, we have an opportunity to kind of incorporate those LCL standards, and again, it's in middle school also. But the opportunity of the relationship that the students have with the teachers to say, or to go up and say, I have this information, what do I do with it? Okay? That's where the student can access any of those support services, the guidance counselor, psych, social work. So again, being that the teachers are probably the first line of defense for us, it does give us the opportunity then to at least address what their concerns are, take a look at it, determine if the student needs additional support, or at least thank you for the referral, and we'll follow it up from here.
So it's not just a student with their own issues coming to that teacher, it's other students that have a relationship with that teacher that can say, hey, my friend told me this last night, and they can help that.
Social media has really benefited us from a mental health perspective to allow students that are concerned about their friends to come to us.
We just, I'm sorry, can I just comment on it? But we need to publicize that as a district, as a school, as a student service coordinator, as a counselor, because we've done such a good job with letting our students know, hey, if you hear of a threat that's going on in your school, you speak up, you tell somebody right away. We need to also take that same consideration when it comes to hearing about their friends and something going on with their friends, that, hey, it's okay to and something going on with their friends, that, hey, it's okay to say, you know, "I heard Jimmy might be, you know, having some problems with suicidal thoughts." We need, we need to take that same, "It's okay to let somebody know" type of approach.
At, at middle school, in the beginning of the school year, we spend a lot of time during their advisory period, going and, and letting the students know what particular supports are in the building, why they should come down, what do they use those services for. So we spend a lot of time talking to them about that. And it's just not for kids that are at risk, it's for those friends that are struggling too and don't know what to do. So we spend a lot of time coaching them and giving them those resources at the beginning of the year so they know what resources are out there. We really want to just kind of, in a sense, let them know everything that's there and kind of make them know that these resources in the building so they can feel comfortable accessing us when they need to talk about something.
Do you, I mean, do you have, I mean, how many students do you typically, or might you have that have reported things about other students?
Daily.
With, with social media, it, I mean, you have one student come down, but you might have 12 or 13 that know about it because it's getting to everyone. So we're spending time following up with all of them, working with all of them, making sure they're all in a good place before they go home.
And I just, I'll just say, while the kids are still here, I'm going to encourage all of you to, if you know somebody, please say something to these people. They, they will listen to you and they will talk to you. So please, you could be helping your friends by speaking up. It's, just don't think it's not, you know, going to happen. Because I, I know someone who's had to help a friend and they actually saved their life.
Well, and the big thing too, I mean, the biggest fear that a lot of students have about not wanting to come down and to, you know, give information is because of that confidentiality piece.
Right.
And that, when they do come down, we don't, we do not, we take that very seriously and that is confidential. We don't release that information to the person they're concerned about.
Because I think, I think our students are really probably the, the, the front line. You know, because again, those students that may not want to come or may not have a relationship with any of their teachers because of variety of factors. Some of their friends may be the front line and that's going to be a very critical, that's the critical relationship too.
I know our building administrators throughout the district stress, somebody form a relationship with at least one student so that they know that they have somebody that they can confide in. And that has helped us in utilizing that faculty member as a resource.
So given the complexity of mental health issues, as I travel around three or four counties and talk to principals and administrators throughout the district, this is not a 204 issue. This is a United States issue, maybe a world issue. So we have, I'm going to open Pandora's box here a little bit. We have recommended minutes for math. We have recommended minutes for ELA. And yet, we have a serious issue in which we need to educate kids and make mental health issues less stigmatizing. Do we need more time? Do we need instructional time with our kids? Because as you stated, unless there's, kids get their needs met and feel safe, they're not going to learn. So do we need more time? Do we need to spend more time during the instructional day to assist our kids in order that they can actualize?
I do think our relationship with Castle will help us identify what it is that we need to do because they'll help us identify our areas that we need to focus on to make improvements. We know that, well, we've done a ton of work. We just know that there's holes in areas that we need to look at with a closer lens. And I think Castle will help us identify that and then build a plan, a lot of which will probably be building capacity of our staff and looking at instruction.
If you're going to identify two strengths, you're just happy as can be and one area or two that you would need to improve, what would they be? So as we hear the next presentation, we know what to listen to.
I, I mean, Mike, I hear what you're saying. I mean, the piece is, is that we're doing some really good things and we're working with a lot of good outside agencies to try to bring things into schools. But the piece that's difficult is that anxiety disorders, depression, it's on a rise. It's, it's, the percentage of people diagnosed, adolescents, children today that are diagnosed with anxiety disorders is higher than it's ever been. I mean, they're talking about anxiety disorders being an epidemic by 2025. So I mean, the question is, how do we deal with all that stuff? We're doing some good things, but, you know, how do we teach our kids the resiliency, the strategies to be able to be successful in the classroom so they're not feeling overwhelmed? So they can't feel like they can't, you know, the only option they have is to, you know, shut down, not come to school or, we need, you're right, we need to, we need to help them teach those skills and we're doing some good things. So the question is, how do we get better about doing that? You know, and part of that is working with the community, working with other agencies to see how we bring some new things into schools and try some different things.
And if we could get into the classroom more and educate the students, I think that's where we need more time. Our biggest fear is the student that doesn't have that relationship or doesn't talk to somebody. That's our biggest fear, is the student that, for lack of a better term, has fallen through the crack and don't reach out to anybody.
Any other last comments or questions? Thanks, guys, it was tough one, thank you.
They have no idea what they're going to miss.
I know, I'm so sorry for you.
This is their, this is their wheelhouse, right? I'm talking about social media here.
The communication presentation has no one.
They, they already know it all about social media, so.
Right, right.
Our next discussion item is our communication update. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, as always, to give you an update from the communications department. We like to give you guys each year kind of the what's new from our department. We thought we would start with the obvious, the two new faces in our department. Lisa Schwartzberry is our new community relations coordinator. And the man behind the tower of equipment back there is Clayton Urbannick. He's our media producer. And I think most of you know Greg Gibson. He is our lead web developer. Much of our work focuses on supporting district goal number four, which is to be student and community-focused. We measure this goal through adding an additional question to the Illinois Five Essentials survey. We ask our parents to give us a grade. Just as a reminder, last year, we moved to an every-other-year implementation on that survey. So we did not give it last year, but we'll be giving it again starting November 15th, I think, is the launch date. So there'll be lots of messages going to parents, asking them to participate in that survey. And I forgot, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to jump in at any time. We think that one of the reasons that our parents give us a good grade, one of the contributing factors, is that they feel well-informed. This chart represents all of the communication channels that we have created over the past 15 years. These are all still functioning and are maintained and tweaked and updated as necessary to keep them relevant. Probably the most time-consuming part of some of these is really producing new content to keep it fresh and keep the community informed. If you look at the top right-hand part of it, those are the two things that we launched last year. We launched the Data Lab and also began the process of putting out into the public our responsive website with the district site to begin with. Taking a look at a couple of the areas where we still see significant growth, our Twitter followers continues to grow. The next target that we're trying to get to is 15,000 followers. And I really believe in my heart, we're just one snow day away from reaching that goal. Not that I would, you know, wish harsh weather on any of us, but it would really help me out with this. I did hear there was a prediction that we're going to have kind of a rough winter and I got a little excited about that. Another area that we see a lot of growth, and especially if you look at the past couple of years, significant growth in our video views. The Explore video series, Explore 204 video series, was launched in the 15-16 school year. So that kind of accounts for the bump from the year previous. But looking at the growth in last year, we think there's really a couple of reasons that we saw that significant increase. The first is 15-16 gave us the year to really build an audience. That people became a little aware of the Explore video series. We had a little brand identity going on. One, they got the e-news with the video, they knew what to expect. Hopefully, they thought that it was worth two minutes of their time to let us share that story. The other thing that we did was we changed the way that we announced those videos in emails. So we started to embed an image from the video and we made that image a clickable link that goes right to the video. And just to make sure that the audience is aware that that's a clickable link, we put that big red play button right over the top. And we're really pretty picky about the images that we select from the video because we want, you know, Clayton probably wants to kill me every month because we want it to be something that really draws your interest. Even if you don't read the email, if you're just skimming it and you get to that image, we want it to be something that is intriguing enough that you go ahead and you click that play button. So speaking of Explore 204 and watching an Explore 204, we're going to launch the October one to our community in later this week, but we wanted to give you guys the opportunity to see it first. So if you take a look at the screen.
Well, I really like to like garden and like, I like to do outdoors things. I like to do like planting and learn about the environment.
It's like a way to be outside but not doing sports. So if you don't like being active but still like going outside in nature, it's a great way to do that.
It's about the environment and how you can help it or teach other people about it.
Shaw and I have been facilitating the Greens Club for the last five years. But prior to then, Rebecca Quirk was one of the TAs here at Scullin. And she just had a heart, a love for beautifying the grounds. And she was really passionate about it, really wanted to share that passion with students.
A lot of students do care about the earth and they want to get involved in, you know, projects that help the environment. And we wanted them to be involved in some way with the school, do little projects around Scullin, you know, things like planting and weeding and just spending time outdoors.
We think it's a really important club for a lot of different reasons. The kids really experience a sense of respect in our grounds in our building. And then also, just with the earth and climate and global warming so prevalent in the news, we think it's really important that they're aware of those issues and learn what they can do to preserve the earth.
And we also hope that they, you know, they make good friendships. It's a safe place to like, you know, make friends and do fun activities and share that passion that they have.
If you see someone who doesn't really sit with anyone or talk to a lot of people, go up to them, they're like a new student in, like Scullin or something. Walk up to them, ask them, "Hey, can I talk with you?" And they're like, "Okay." Instant friend.
So videos like the ones we just watched are being posted to YouTube now, where since July, we've been hosting and streaming all of our district videos. It's a platform that online users are familiar with and our videos and channel are now easy to discover and browse. As of tonight, we have over 350 subscribers and we've had over 18,000 video views since July, meaning that in just under four months, we're past the halfway point to the number of views we had all of the last school year. YouTube offers us free live streaming for events like these board meetings, saving money for the district, and it has built-in features and tools that give us a head start in closed captioning. Clayton then manually transcribes the captions, every single one of our videos from those two-minute Explore 204 videos to entire board meetings to ensure that they're accessible for all viewers. This process takes approximately three minutes of work for every minute of video. You can find links to our YouTube channel on our website and in our mobile app. The iPSD 204 app has had a total of over 18,000 installs since we released it over three years ago for iPhone and Android. That's about the same as the number of households in our district. So that growth will slow as we reach saturation with anyone who might be inclined to download it. Before the beginning of each school year, most people use it to view or download the upcoming year's calendar and events. Once school starts, the most popular reason for using the app is to check on lunch menus. It also gets a lot of use as a portal to e-school plus home access, to our district website and to our school websites. Last year, we launched a redesigned responsive district website. This means that every visitor sees a complete website that adapts itself for computers, tablets and phones, that loads quickly even on slower networks and that's accessible to users of all abilities. We're continuing to add and improve features from support for higher-definition monitors to accessible buttons for sharing news and information on social media. And in addition to our district website, this year, we're launching updated school websites as well. We released the first of these this month, Prairie Children Preschool. On average, about 40% of visitors to all our school sites are visiting on their phones. For the preschool site, over 55% of visitors are on mobile devices, so it seemed like a good first school for an overhaul. This fall, we also created a STEPS website up at steps ipsd.org, which has news, events and general information for our supportive training experiences post-secondary program. For both the app and our websites, we continue to do all our own design and development in-house at no additional cost to the district. And moving offline, here's Lisa with an update on community relations.
Okay, something new in community relations this year is the Kid Essentials Fund. Currently, we have approximately 18% of the students in our district who qualify for free or reduced lunch. That translates to over 5,000 low-income students in our district. Over the summer, I met with all 33 principals in our district and I found that there was a consistent need for support for our low-income students. Realizing that growing need, we approached the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation and asked them to create the Kid Essentials Fund. The purpose of the Kid Essentials Fund is to provide immediate support for these students when a need arises. Some examples of these needs would be a low-income student who started after school started and needed school supplies. Or more recently, we had a handful of families that were displaced from the recent hurricanes. We had one child from Puerto Rico who simply wanted a coat to stay warm. These needs are typically met by reaching out to community partners, civic organizations and churches. Oftentimes, it could take days or even weeks to align resources to meet these needs. Establishing the Kid Essentials Fund through the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation streamlines this process to one source and provides immediate support for our students. Through the generous support of Rotary and the Samaritan Network, we already have contributions made to this fund. We will continue to work on finding additional resources through private and corporate donors as well as grants. And we want to thank the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for establishing this fund to further support our students.
Taking a look ahead, this school year, we anticipate our department will be very busy providing support for the Community Engagement Program, Engage 204. That includes creating a website. We already have engage204.org reserved. The next step is to start building content before we launch it. Also, some video support for the program and lots and lots and lots of messages in order to keep our community informed. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Did you, did you always pick the images of the videos in the past or no? When we were on our own platform?
Mm-hmm, for Explore 204?
No, I'm just saying for...
Oh, no, it's like, it was kind of an auto...
Yeah, sometimes it was automated. We, we sometimes would customize them, so.
Random question, but there was always some interesting board members' faces that you captured on the, on the board meetings.
That was done automatically?
I'm really happy to see the Kid Essential Fund at IPEF. I think that's, that's a need that's existed for quite some time. And I think that's got a potential to have a great positive impact in, in our community. We talk about the number, percentage of free and reduced lunch, but there's also a great desire in the community to help out. And if we can connect the dots and provide the channel for that, that creates the win-win for everybody. So I'm glad to see that, that's coming around.
We were happy that the foundation agreed to support that as well.
Anyone else? Thank you guys so much. You guys are doing great work, keep it up, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
We now go to our Illinois Association of School Board Resolution and Position Statement. That's why the kids laughed. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Rising.
All right, so hopefully you guys all received my email last week. Kind of outlined how I was thinking we would do this meeting. If you don't have the resolutions in hard copy in front of you, I also emailed a copy last week, so you can pull that up. But essentially, I just want to go through these really quick. I don't want to spend, I don't want to labor through them. Give a synopsis of each one. If there's no questions, we'll just move forward. And then at our next meeting, we'll, if there are any outstanding questions, I'll have gotten those to everybody and we'll take a vote on all the resolutions. And I'll represent your vote at the delegate committee meeting. So, just quickly, you all saw that I, you know, outlined how kind of what I take with me at the delegate assembly and I essentially just bring in how we voted. And that was on page four, I believe. And then the resolutions, the new resolutions for this year started on page nine. So, to start with the first resolution, I'll just give you a quick synopsis. If you want to add, you can add to this. But essentially, this resolution that IASB committee put forward or that was submitted from districts, I should say, was regarding guns in school. This was submitted by the following districts you can see on the resolution. But their whole point was that they said that every school district should have the choice and the option to do what they feel is best for their school as long as there are sufficient background checks, concealed carry, you know, training. They want it to be up to the individual boards because a lot of boards don't have the financial resources for full-time security, SRO, et cetera. They also made the comment that neighboring states, Indiana, Kentucky, Missouri, have done something similar to this. Basically, the resolution committee are representatives for Illinois Association of School Boards. They did not support this, so their recommendation was do not adopt. Primarily because there are already state laws in place. And there's also the thing called the Federal Gun Free Zone Act from nineteen ninety. So, they kind of defaulted to state and federal law and said, you want to do something about it, take it up with them. So, their recommendation was do not adopt. Does anybody have good questions?
I definitely understand the need for security. Got some rural areas where police are an hour away. But there's probably other ways of being secure and safe. So, I support the resolution committee's recommendation to not adopt.
All right. All right. Second resolution you may be familiar with. It was submitted by Indian Prairie School District 204 regarding schools as polling places and reimbursement. I don't know if I need to give a synopsis of that one. I don't think so.
Hopefully, we're familiar with it.
Yes.
We don't support it. We're going to look...
I agree with the recommendation.
Yeah, the recommendation, I should say, yes. The recommendation was do adopt. So, that was the resolution committee's findings. Okay, number three was regarding one percent sales tax statewide. Noble effort by this district. They referred back to previous position statements that IASB should support anything that brings more revenue into education, including the, they even referred to the Constitution that supports additional revenue. What they wanted to adopt this is that though every county across the state accepts this one percent sales tax increase. The findings of the resolution committee is that there was, you know, the way this all started is Iowa does something like this and Rock Island saw this and, but apparently back, I didn't get the exact year, but there was an option for counties to do this in the state of Illinois. And only forty-nine of the hundred and one counties decided to take advantage of that. So, the findings of the resolution committee is you cannot, you know, we tout as a, as school boards that we want to be representative of our communities. To put something like this in place would kind of take away that representative power, if you will, that school districts and local communities and local counties should be able to make those own decisions if they so choose. So, the findings of the resolution committee was to do not adopt. Any questions?
I support that recommendation to not adopt.
I support it, too.
Next one was number four, Open Meetings Act, Discussion on Shared Staff. Very interesting how this came about. Boards had, different boards from different communities, school boards, had these joint co-op agreements. And this particular one came about because they had a athletic program, a joint co-op athletic program that they shared staff. And OMA, Open Meeting Act Rule, says that you cannot, a board cannot discuss things with another board regarding what happens in executive session. And they wanted to kind of loosen the laws on that. But what the committee came back with and said was that technically, a board can invite somebody into the executive session if they want. That law does not prohibit against that. But the committee felt for them to have a position on this, that would go above, I guess, what IASB would recommend. So, they defaulted that this school district take their argument up with the Attorney General and/or with legislators, that this was kind of out of the wheelhouse of the Association of School Boards, so to speak. So, they said do not adopt. But I could definitely see their needs for wanting to do that.
These people, this district argued after, when I presented the argument. And they were meeting to work on, in closed session, to work on hiring a football coach. And in doing, in making their arguments, they disclosed that they met as a, in an executive session as high school and elementary districts, and they did that regularly. And then they said, now we want our high school districts to meet like across districts. And we're like, it was, a lot of resistance was mad on that. Like, how exactly does that work and who's keeping the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
So, it was, it was pretty, it was pretty doubtful that it was going to pass. But, I mean, I support efficiencies and trying to get the stuff done, but, and the creativity, but...
Well, I almost, what it reminded me of kind of is our agreement we have with the John C. Dunham Stem School, how we have multiple boards that have, all came to an agreement and we have representation and things get communicated. Maybe they should take a look at how we set up that, you know?
Another good resolution, sure.
Take a page out of that, you know? Okay, number five. This is basically, this came about because this particular district that submitted this was upset, I guess, that park results obviously are public information reported on the state report card. But when the media went to go publish this information, there was really no disclaimer. And what they wanted there to be was a disclaimer that basically said that results could vary based on if you take the park test electronically or if you take it with paper and pencil. And, you know, valid argument. And what the committee recommended is that, you know, school districts first and foremost should be communicating that information to their communities. But, you know, that there should be some type of disclaimer if this is going to go out publicly. And so, they said do adopt. But they also said, I thought it was kind of funny. They said, well, who knows how long parks could even be around? So, this might not even be an issue in a year or two. So, they went along with it and, you know, I think it's a good idea. Any questions on that one? All right, moving along. Number six, PTEL, no penalty for under levy. This was submitted by Naperville District 203. There was already a current resolution or a position statement, I should say, from IASB that has not been picked up by legislation. So, they saw this was in existence and 203 thought they would firm it up a little bit to make it a little more maybe palatable to some legislators. But essentially, the way it came about, and I'm going to give a hypothetical here, say CPI, and again, this is for districts that are ruled by PTEL laws. Say CPI next year is two percent. And a district doesn't feel like they need to necessarily levy for the whole two percent. You know, maybe they are doing okay and maybe only want to...
That's very hypothetical.
Well, for hypothetical, definitely for us. But there are other districts that do very well that they may only want to levy one percent or one point five percent. And I will say, having heard some of those districts talk in the past, that there is a feeling sometimes that can be, well, if we don't levy, we're going to lose it. Use it or lose it type of thing. So, what this amendment to the existing previous position statement that was there limits this to only a three-year window. So, you can only go back and recover, you know, say that was CPI was two percent, they only levied for one point five. They can only go back up to three years to recoup that point five percent. Now, when I talked to the president of their school board about this, because I wanted some more clarification, she said to me that only if the state causes a financial burden, additional financial burden on that particular district for that particular giving, given year. Now, I could not find that within here. But if I direct your attention to the second column, I guess, first full paragraph in the second column, it says legislation to allow school districts to levy less than the full amount in any given year with the ability to levy these funds at a later point in the event of state action. So, I think, again, and I'm probably going to get more clarification on this before two weeks again, but I think what was expressed to me is only if their burden to take on additional funding or their funding from the state was reduced, can they go back and recoup those funds. So, their amendment to this was two things. Shorten it to a three-year time period to recoup those funds for CPI. And then the one that I still need to clarify more is only if they were responsible for additional financial burden. And the recommendation of the committee was to do adopt. So, they supported this. Number seven, state authorized charter school funding. Hopefully, you saw my message that the original hard copy of this said, the resolution committee said do not adopt, but they changed that. So, the recommendation of the committee is do adopt. But essentially, they, this basically says is that, you know, as charter school money goes up, public school dollars decrease and that the state authorized charter commission should take that consideration and not be cutting public school funding when they're increasing charter school funding or taking away from their local, their local district. So, obviously, the support was to adopt on that.
I agree.
Last item is energy savings and contracting. So, we all know how there's things that we have to go out to competitive bid for. When the school code was written, these things primarily revolved around energy. And that could be energy as it relates to lighting, heating, AC, we know, efficiency programs. There are rules that says, school code says we have to go out to competitive bid for those particular things. Well, this district felt, well, wait a minute. There's a lot of leeway in the current school code and shouldn't we be firming this up to represent our taxpayers better? They gave the example of cameras, security cameras in the school, and they did not need to go out to competitive bid for that. Well, I guess shame on them, for one thing, if they didn't go out to competitive bid. But, you know, the, the, you know, the, the recommendation of the committee was to adopt. And they want to make sure that school boards go out for more competitive bids when it comes to things like technology or software or things that we have typically determined our need as a district and gone out and found those companies that supported what our needs were. I think the initial school code lot, left it open for interpretation because they recognized this. But what this is, this resolution is going to do is essentially say school districts need to go out to bid for some of those things that we in the past have not typically gone out to bid for. So, again, the committee's recommendation was do adopt. I encourage you to read through this one. I do not think for a district our size, while yes, we get great competitive bids, there are certain things, though, that are unique to our district. And I think this particular resolution may prohibit the flexibility that we currently have with the way the school code is written.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I don't even need this because there's only one person here.
You can just come up right over there.
You know, competitive bids make sense when it's an apples-to-apples comparison. So, you know, like we had on here a bid for fencing.
Right.
But when you're talking about technology and even, I would argue even the cameras, because when we looked at replacing cameras, not all technology is exactly the same. So, even when we looked at different cameras, there were certain features of this one which were more, you know, attractive to us than this one. Or even with software, our IEP software that we just purchased. We did an RFP and looked at those kinds of things. But a bid would have forced us to take the lowest bidder, but not necessarily the one that really would meet the needs that our staff had. So, I think it's, I think it's different when you're talking about something that, you know, can be easily compared across. You're getting the same thing for this price and getting the same, you know, asphalt paving, you know, but technology isn't the same way. All the, all the products are different.
So, I, are you saying though that bid and RFP are diff, two different things?
They are different.
Yeah, I'm, I guess, I don't know. I, I, I struggle with that a bit. I think that I would like to see more encouragement to... I think that I would like to see more encouragement to have RFPs and everything. And mark off what you meet, what you don't meet, and give us pricing. And it worries me that, that does seem a bit loose, so I was supportive of this. But I also was even more supportive than, um, a belief statement is weaker than a, um, resolution or whatever. So I'm like, a position, and I, I was almost saying it needed to be a position, not just a belief. So, I, I really, um, after running a large procurement group, and I know it's not school district or whatever, I really believe in that need for RFPs to at least get an understanding of what, what you might get.
But an RFP is different than, you don't have to take the low bid, the lowest. But you do, if you do a bidding under school code.
Okay.
So that's the, I mean, that's the difference.
But that's to be, that's to be why, while, why there is that code in place is so, if, say it's asphalt, use that for an example, and there's five asphalt companies. But Mike just happens to be buddies with somebody that has, works at one of those asphalt company. The whole reason that was put in place is to make sure, for things that are not unique to a district, asphalt is not unique to a district, right? So, that's why I think it was put in place, to take the lowest competitive bid. For other things that are unique to a district, I think it should remain an RFP type of thing because there's, it would be, it would take staff and just to try to find a company that would even be able to meet a lot of those RFP requirements, that I just think it's, yeah, it's tough.
Any other clarification on the language?
Yeah, did you guys want me to, well, I guess, think about it. If you have additional questions, and if you think of something, especially if it relates to maybe this one, or, um, I already told you I'm gonna clarify with 203 again. Um, uh, but if you think of anything, try to get it to me by this Friday.
So we're not ready to vote on this?
No, that's next time.
Yeah, we'll vote next time. But if you have questions, please try to get to, to me by this Friday, so I have a week to work on them.
Suspend pause.
Yes, I was just gonna say...
We probably could have, but, yeah. Alright, I've done it.
Okay, now moving to our policy work, review, review policy three. I'm gonna turn this over to our policy expert, Mr. Karibus.
You're doing a great job of governing, Mr. President. Um, I would like to, uh, go through section three a little bit on reviewing board policy. And in reviewing board policy, I start off with looking at our board policy development policy, 2:240. It, although it talks about board policy development, there's other sections in there that are relevant to, uh, our discussion here. It talks about what should we be doing when we review policy. The board will periodically review its policies. Are they relevant? Are they effective? Do they need change? And we could annually review the policies, and then we could enter a monitoring calendar. Why do I think all that stuff is important? Why do I like the fact that that's in policy? Is it puts it in front of us on a regular basis? You guys spent, prior board members, some of us more veteran than myself, spent a lot of time developing our current board policy, along with administration. But then what happens with policy is usually, been the practice of this board, is just wait for updates or presentations. The updates aren't as frequent. You only get an update when there's changes in law. And the presentations usually hit on certain key areas, but they don't, you're not gonna get an administration presentation on this section of the policy. So I think it behooves us, as a board, to set in motion a process where we take a look at this regularly so that it becomes our practice and the next boards that didn't have a chance to develop these policies that aren't familiar with them can say, and start taking a look at them. The reason why I like advocating for policy review is it's kinda like a warm little blanket. It keeps us out of trouble and it keeps us safe, okay? And it educates Ms. Price about the law every so often.
Why are you looking, why, why do you call me out on that?
Just, a thought came to my head. So, and, so, moving along. Look at, uh, what are the stages of policy development? The IASB recommends that we develop policy. We update our policy. It has a policy reference education subscription service that we affectionately call press. We review, we should review policy, we should monitor the policy, and communicate it. The updating stuff is left to press. It's our job to review it. We monitor it when we see how administration's doing. And the communicating it piece is presenting it to the community on the internet site and trying to embed it in all the stuff we do. It's, a lot of these provisions have worked their way through the agenda, down to the parent handbook. That's the way to communicate these things out. Yes, we can do a better job on it, professional development, educating each of the members, uh, employees of the district on what these policies are, but that's an ever-in struggling endeavor. Looking at 3, 310, I just wanna go through this one real quick.
Could I ask your position on something before we actually go into the policy?
Nope.
Okay.
Hold your questions to the end of the presentation.
Fine with that.
Looking at 310, this is how I look at a presentat, I look at a board policy. What are the sections in there that are related to board? What are the sections in there related to the superintendent? Cuz those are the ones are usually, we should be getting a report, we should be doing something, the superintendent should be doing something, and we should be evaluating superintendent. So, when I, when I start looking at a policy, I go through here, and so, look at 310. What is the administration supposed to do? The administration's supposed to do these things. Okay, some of them are real general, but we look at to the, the bottom. We're supposed to administer the policy, make it available. There's supposed to be procedures that are being developed. Well, how do we make sure administration's doing that? We can start asking those questions. I look at the legal references, cuz sometimes those assist us in reading the policy and interpreting it. So I've provided a, a site on how you can access the, the school code and the administration code. We don't take that stuff out of our policy, we keep it in there, okay? So it provides us a, a guidepost to go look at stuff. And then, why do, why does the IASB think it's important that it, we cross-reference all these things? Maybe we should take a look at those cross-reference policies, cross-reference policies when we're looking at this one. That's how I generally digest a policy. The IASB wants us to look at it and says, do we wanna change this policy? If so, to what extent? In, in looking at the, the law part of it, it, it helps us to say, can we change it? Or is this a requirement? So if you flip to, I'm gonna give you an example. Policy 370, there's no legal reference under that one. So that, there's no requirement that we have a policy that has a succession of authority. It's just good practice, it's a good policy to have, but there's no legal requirement that we do. They don't reference any statute, they don't reference any case law. And then if you read this policy, it talks about, there should be a succession plan, developed by the superintendent and submitted to the board. So that, that gets you thinking, okay, we should be getting a plan from the superintendent, we should be seeing it. It puts those things on your radar, those are the qualifications. Going back to policy 310, my general review. Do we wanna change the policy? Do we wanna, is there anything in here we wanna monitor in particular? Then I, those are the IASB provisions, then I look at two other lenses. We did the equity audit, and it, in that audit, it was resolved that we would review all of our policies with an equity focus. So, that's an additional burden we've placed on ourselves to now look through this, these policies and say, is, from an equity standpoint, do we need to make any changes to a policy to permeate it out? And then we are all, also a board that's focused on district goals. Does the policy at all relate to district goals, and how can we more focus it on those? That's how I digest the policies when I go through them. I wanted to share that information and knowledge with you. I don't think we need to go through each of these right now. I think we can digest those on our own, but I think it's important that we present these to the board on a regular basis so that we can look at them through those lenses and see if they are, whether the lenses are IASB's lens, or my lens, or your own lens. It's good to have the discussion, do we, are these still relevant? Are these still helping us, do they helping us meet our ends? What I would like to promote further is that we enter and agree on a board calendar so that we could add this to our regular review of sections so that we know come August, we're gonna be reviewing section four. There's, I'd like a biannual calendar, we don't need to be doing each section every time. But with the turnover of the board and the elections every so often, a biannual review makes sense. And there's certain policies that we have to review on an annual basis, as required by law, and that could be put into our board calendar as well. Then it goes on, then reviewing policy moves on to monitoring policy. The big thing I think on that is, we want, we need to give administration a heads-up on what reports and information we want to make sure that they're following policy. What data do we need so that they have the chance to collect it, put it together, and present it? And eventually, that becomes part of the superintendent evaluation. Have these things been met? Has the data been provided? Have the policies been followed? And you can joke about it being systemic, and you can look at the policy and saying, for example, the social-emotional part, had the policy saying, the superintendent shall ensure that the curriculum includes social-emotional learning. Well, we can hear a presentation on it, we can ask questions and drill it down, or we could say, did you meet, did you meet that? Did you do it? And so there's a spectrum on how rigorous you, you make the evaluation. You know, the, the policy, the law says, the board will make sure the superintendent makes sure social-emotional learning's in the curriculum. So, part of what we did tonight was making sure that happened. And this gets into some of the why we're doing it. That's the extent of my presentation. We can go through each of the policies, look at board or superintendent. I like looking at 340, that talks about the superintendent evaluation. We're gonna evaluate the superintendent annually. Keep the appraisal a dynamic process by assessing its effectiveness periodically and revising it as necessary. That's a great idea, we should, we should look at that annually.
Did you compare that to the compiled statute, how that relates?
That one is directly related.
Is it? Okay.
The annual review, the, the dynamic part is, is added by IASB. So that's my...
Yes, you do.
So here, here's a question I was gonna ask you, Justin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because of your legal background. When there's a lot of references to a policy that has to do with the Illinois compiled statute, you know, I mean, kinda makes it almost cut and dry, if you will. However, my question to you is, how do you feel about that? I mean, meaning, do you just follow the compiled statute and follow the law and keep it simple stupid? Or, could there be potential or possible cases where, as a district, we, as a board, write something into that policy? I, I mean, because when, you know, Kathy and Lori and myself were around while we switched to press and we went through the whole policy manual page by page, there were a lot of old policies that we had that were written by those boards.
Yep.
And written around the compiled statute as well, and they kinda did their own thing. And, you know, I know you pointed out a, a, a policy that has no reference to a statute. So, you know, where, where do you kinda land with that? You know, take it into consideration, all your other things, like, you know, make sure we look at it with an equity lens and, and everything else.
Well, the, following the, the law is the floor.
Right.
And what we wanna do is the extra stuff. So the equity lens, that's our requirement. We don't have to do that. The law doesn't make us do that, but we've decided to do that. We could take it a step further and draft a equity policy. Those are things we can add on to this that are above and beyond what the law requires. But regularly reviewing it is the way to ensure that we're aware of it and that future boards are aware of it. Cuz part of what happens is you, you get done doing it, and you put it on a shelf and you forget about it. Gets old and dusty, unless you take a look at it every so often. And so, and, and that might give you, give you an idea on developing something further. You see that? You go look at the statute, or 90% of it's the statute, this 10% we can tweak, and we wanna go further in this direction. So that's why I think assisting and looking at the statute helps decide what is, you know, here's an example of what the press update is. You know, this is, this is rather robust, but this only deals with, you know, the, the tweaks that are happening. Yeah, it explains it. But I, I, we should look towards taking it above and beyond and make it our own. They're giving us the floor, is the way I look at it.
But without, but what I've heard you say before is sometimes it's better to keep things broad.
Oh, yeah.
Not get into the weeds too much, not make it, you know, not make it really...
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't want it to, you don't wanna to take it below the floor, right? I mean, there's a, you know, inequity across the whole district is one thing. Inequity, you know, in this specific classroom is, is another, so...
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, so, when we're looking at board work, we wanna make sure we're not burdening our administrators with our board ideas.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're talking about taking four of our policies once a year, flipping them every other year? Is that's pretty much, pretty much you're saying? So that's... Pretty much you're saying. So that's a lot of work. So I'm going to ask the administration, our superintendent, what's your take on this kind of protocol going forward?
I'm going to interrupt the superintendent.
Why? Why? Don't I get to say no to you?
I mean, it's, this is board work. It shouldn't be administration work.
But it, it ends up being. I mean, that's like saying, you know, to our kids, yeah, you can go do that, but you have to drive them. You have to pick them up. I mean, right. It's their, their activity, but you're organizing it. I mean, so there is a lot of administration work to it and they have to answer all our questions. Or you think we can answer our own questions?
Well, I think the extent of our review is bright what we're just doing right now. I mean, I, it doesn't have to be more. There's a difference between, you know, reviewing and monitoring. I'm not saying we need to monitor all the policies. You know, go through Section 3 and I want reports on everything. I think we, as board members, just need to focus on each section, you know, every two years so that we make sure they're relevant to us, that we know them, that we're up to date on them.
So if we're going to change policy though, generally we have to go through a first reading.
Sure.
Unless it's just a change in date. And then we can do that through consent agenda and then a second reading. So do you see this part of the process? And what happens when we get a press review? So we get 10 things from press. Do we just do that also outside the section, I guess?
Well, there's, I, there's developing policy. That's if we wanted to develop an equity policy, that's its own track.
Right. There's monitoring, yeah.
If we want to update policy, that's press. That's, that really shouldn't be that big of a deal. You know, change in law, we're updating our floor, you know, to fill in the cracks. Here's the floor. So updates shouldn't be that involved. We should review policies on a biannual basis. The monitoring is all the presentations we get. We had social emotional tonight. That, that, there's a policy on that. Did the superintendent satisfy that social emotional learning is part of the curriculum? And then.
So if we want to change the, in our review, we want to change it, then we have to go through the.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Yeah, that's not, you can't make changes when you're just reviewing. You're just saying.
So review is different than.
Right.
Got it.
You're just taking a look at it. You're just saying, is this where we want to be? We're here for legal reasons. You know, we're, do we want to take it up a notch? But we haven't, we haven't looked at Section 3 in a while. Let's take it, let's take a look at it. I just don't see it being a lot of administration work on the review side. Maybe taking off some of the work on the updating side.
Other questions or comments?
When do we need to respond, like yea or nay on that? What's, what's your plan? Are we going to make a motion at some point in a future meeting to put this, to move forward with this?
Well, I don't think we.
Or is this something we just put on a calendar?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need, I don't think we need a board action to put it on a board calendar to review these things. You know, I'd like to get some consensus that you guys want to consider these on a regular basis. But adding things to the board calendar is also covered by policy. And, you know, we can, we can do it, we cannot do it. Do you want to?
What does policy say?
I'll let you figure it out. But, you know, do we want to endeavor on this at all? That's, that's the discussion. I want, I think we should review policy. You know, we, we could say, we can nix that.
Well, I think it's, it's a great idea. It is board work. It is what we're supposed to be doing. I guess I'm worried about the extent of it interfering with other things. I'm looking at, it's after nine, Justin, geez. This was your presentation.
Whatever you want to do, Kat.
I, I, I think it's good. I'm, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the time involvement of it. And so I don't know. I, I would say maybe we're not four of the policies every other year. Seems, seems like a lot. I mean, when we went through all the policies that took, how many meetings?
It was like four meetings at, at least, at least three hours each.
Yeah. And that was really just taking press and deciding if it was right. So it was really a matter of reviewing. I mean, that was a review process.
And we have that ability to, once we review, what press gives us to monitor and enhance or take out language, you know, in certain situations where it's not a legal piece of it that they're changing. But that, I think that is our opportunity to monitor policy.
And I am concerned about the time of it.
Right.
I think the practice is good, but I'm not sure how we can do this with, without it becoming burdensome for us and possibly the administration. So how do we move forward with it?
This meeting went well past nine o'clock, by the way.
It's not going to work.
Just saying.
Mark. I, I think, I honestly think it's good practice. And I think, I know for me personally, I need to be, I need to know policy better than I do. And the way I view this is that we make ourselves accountable. I, when Kathy raised the question to, to administration is what kind of burden is this going to be on them? I think we can make it so it's not a burden on them. I think there's enough information that we have based on how Justin outlined this. If we look at policy, compare it to the compiled statute, look at the administrative code, look at what, if they're IASB, look at it with our equity. I, I think we could do that. And, and that's not to say that we have to sit and pick apart every single policy and every single section. What I think, what I'm hearing Justin say is that it's a board responsibility to at least in the course of that year, go through that section. And if something should come up or something that somebody's concerned about or something that a board member feels we need to take a look at, then we go down that path. But that's not to say we need to pick apart every single policy itself. But what encourages me and, and what I like about this is it forces me to make sure that I'm reading policy. At the end of the day, it's probably going to make me a better board member. So, you know, I, I don't know. I, I like the idea. I think it's, I could, it could be beneficial or it could be a big waste of our time, but I don't think that's necessarily the case because this is, teaches us all policy better. So how could that be a waste of our time?
I think that while it may be involved, especially as a new board member, I think it, I think it would be worthwhile. As was mentioned, you know, we have new member, potentially new members coming on every couple of years. And to have an opportunity to understand in depth what our policy, what policy states, I think is, is beneficial.
Mrs. Dunning.
Well, I agree with what Susan said. I guess tonight I didn't expect a debate on that. I guess I thought it was a standard procedure that you would regularly review policies and that we would come in tonight and say, does anybody see something that needs to get updated here? And not be having a discussion or having them or have that discussion, like is there something that's outdated, wrong, needs to be added? So I guess I'm a little surprised by the discussion, so.
Sure.
Well, just as a point of clarification, whenever there's a, have a charge from the board or a potential charge from the board to add, you know, create extra work or whatever, that has to be agreed on by the board. And since Kathy pointed out that this could be indeed burdensome, I think that's why we're going through this process of trying to get a consensus so that our superintendent has, knows what her direction is, so.
I guess, I guess, as Lori stated, I was, I'm surprised because I thought that this was something that probably was done, so. I didn't know that we would be discussed.
Well, I'll try to summarize it. Maybe Kathy and Lori can back me up on this too. Since we went to press, and the reason, one of the big reasons we went to press is that press would keep track of the legal things that changed within policy. So that the board would not have to maybe burden themselves with constantly keeping up with policy. So I think we need to make sure as a governing body, we govern ourselves by policy because that's how we're supposed to do things. But I think in the past, we may have just monitored policy as it was appropriate or needed to be done. So I don't know, you know, and I'm just being honest, I don't look into policy as much as I should. Now, I have more since Justice has been on board. But, you know, I've gone a lot with my feelings, my thoughts, my talking to administration, my talking to the community. I've gone off of a lot of those things, which I still should do as a board member. But maybe I haven't governed myself by policy as well as I should have. So that's why we kind of, it's always been there. We just haven't always wrapped ourselves in a warm blanket with it like Justin likes to do.
Can you, can you, I'm, and I, can you clarify what me, what it means since we've gone to press?
All right. Press is through the Illinois Association of School Boards where they have
A legal team.
A legal team and other folks who've put together, you know, those policies. So prior to that, we pretty much really just relied on our attorney saying a law changed, we need to change our policy. They were written, like someone said, we had a number of extraneous, different kinds of policies that said different things. So it, it, it's really difficult. Things change so quickly or the minutia sometimes. So we went and did a full policy manual revamp with a consultant from the IASB on, from press. And redid the entire policy manual. Those are those long meetings that they're talking about where we sat through and went through notebooks like this and Crofts referenced differently what we had and decided if we wanted to keep. You know, probably secession of authority was one we had and we kept. We thought that was a good practice. We would keep it. So with press.
That was 2013, right?
Yeah, with press, you will get through every policy because they review even the ones that don't have any changes, but not only every five years. So if you only did press, you wouldn't, you would get through everything, but it would only be every five years.
It's possible to be on the board and off the board before you ever looked at a policy.
Right. So I mean, that's his point.
And then one of the other reasons we went to press was because, you mentioned the legal, having to go, you know, get legal advice. That was costly. This was a much more inexpensive way, efficient way to do this. So if we went back to something like this, is there, would we, would you still feel like you had to check some things out through, you know, through our attorneys? Or, I mean, how would that work?
I guess it would depend upon how much, I, I don't know that I hear Justin advocating like full cell changes to a lot of policies. So I, I don't, I think we would, we would continue with press because they're going to keep us updated. And that was the problem is our policy manual was not up to date before.
Right.
And I, I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I really think part of yours is, your, is really making sure that board members are familiar with what the board policy says and to really know whether or not it is saying what, the direction that you want the district to go in. So I think I'm hearing you say that. I think that my response about the work piece would be, you know, we're, we would just be vocal if it turned out to be something other than that. And if it did become burdensome, I would just, I would tell you all that. But I think we could look at this board, the calendar and work something up and give you, and see what you think at our next board planning meeting.
Yes.
You could sit down and do that work.
Maybe we can look at that and maybe have a vote that way or just look at it and get an approval, discussion and approval.
Well, that's just talking about a board planning meeting.
For our next board, well, just when we meet.
Right.
In order to come up with a calendar.
Okay.
For your review.
Okay.
One of the things, here's my two cents. As you look at what a board member is supposed to do, reviewing and implementing policies is one of those things that you need to do. I, press is effective, but for me, it's in isolation. I think reviewing a section or a part of a section gives us better context to policy development and where we're going. So I think that's important. The last thing that I think, and just was reinforced at a meeting we were at with a variety of school boards throughout the state asking about the effectiveness of IASB. And this may appall Mr. Kar, uh, Mr. Karubis, but people didn't know what press was. Or kind of knew what their policy was, or said they had the attorney sit through their entire board meeting just so they wouldn't break policy. So from, so, are you okay, Justin? So from my, from my perspective, the highest functioning boards know policy as much as they can and should review it. So that's my perspective on it. And we've always, you know, kind of had pride in ourselves that we're functioning at the highest level possible. So I like Karen's recommendation. Think we need to look at what a calendar would look like. See if it makes sense. I, I, like Kathy, I would not want it to be burdensome. Time to move? Okay. Just two brief things with the board update. Mrs. Dunning is our board representative for community engagement. In addition to me being there, so I've asked her and will ask her to give reports periodically back to the board also on some of the things that she heard and how we're moving forward. So Susan.
It's going to be very brief as our superintendent keeps us up to date and we heard briefly from our communications team today. But we have the second meeting of our community engagement facilitating group meeting last Monday, October 16th. One of the most important decisions that was made was the branding of our name, which is Engage 204. And the communications team has sent out potential logos for the members to consider. And hopefully a decision will be made based on that selection of the team members, providing that input back to the communications team. Hopefully we will have that soon. I'm not sure of the exact process that they're using, but, but we all sent in our, our one, two and three selections. Dates for the first two community engagement meetings have been made, as mentioned earlier, November 14th and December 7th. We're trying to find a potential site to be able to house up to 400 people. Obviously, we're looking for something that we can secure gratis. So that is, that's a big, big push. We have our third facilitating meeting on October 30th. And that is, that's it.
Great. Thanks.
Last but not least, I just want to review, we did go, we all went. I'm proud of that. We all went to DuPage Division meeting, the fall meeting, on Thursday, October 19th. So the, the whole board was there. Highlights of the meeting, as Karen said, our own Kathy Peel is the vice chair of the Division Executive Committee. Mr. Rising was awarded the Leadership Fellow Award. I know Mrs. Price also has that award. What I found out is there's only about 130 people in the state with that distinction, and we have two of them.
I have three. I have one too.
Oh, you do?
Sorry.
So we have three out of 130, out of 6,000 board members.
Yes. So three people have leadership awards. Phenomenal. Yes. And then our own Mr. Carubus received his Master Board distinction for the first time. So congratulations to Mr. Carubus. And then Kathy, Lori, myself, I think that's it. And Mark, he had Master Board member status maintained. So hopefully...
No pressure.
No pressure. It's an efficient and good board, so thanks for everybody.
Just don't be a president. You can earn those points as fast as you want.
So thank you. That's it. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Need your exit slips, please.
Is this, is this it?
Can I use your pen?